All right then, it is six o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order. And we'd like to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, is the door open because I spoke?
It's open.
I spoke with Mark and I know he was...
My main job in life is to keep that door open.
Get your best on.
Uh, Teja, would you do roll call for us, please?
Yeah, Roxanne Kendall.
Here.
Sri Link.
Here.
Bruce Palarkin.
Here.
Lori Palarkin.
Here.
March Bellows.
Lacy Oster.
Here.
Matthew Goll.
Here.
Our district's mission, together we engage, educate, and empower all learners, bridging their passions with pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you Roxanne, and is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you Sheree, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and then the next item, I believe Roxanne, you're going to take over the oath of office.
I just want to make sure I do this right, it's raising your right hand, right? Okay, I just want to make it...
Typically it's the right hand, but you're...
This is the first time I've ever done this, so, anyway. All right, if you'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lacy Oster.
The undersigned who has, and you'll sign this, the undersigned who has been duly elected to the Board of Education of the school district of Somerset, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities, so help me God. I do?
I do.
Very good, thank you very much. So what you will do, you sign, um, put your name here, sign it, and then I will sign and welcome to the... Thank you.
Teja, we have a couple of public comments, would you like to connect the first one?
Hi Cory, can you hear us? Okay, hold on, let us fix our volume. Okay, try one more time.
All right, can you hear me fine?
Yeah, is that good everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Speak louder.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, Cory Miller, 2047 West Detroit Strawberry, and just, uh, I want to make a couple of comments that I hope are pertinent to tonight's, um, board meeting with, um, new members joining and everything. A lot of thinking about the past few months and the initial, uh, how the recall developed and has ended out, and, uh, a couple of things that really came, um, uh, to mind in our household are just the, um, going back to a couple of our initial things that made us unhappy with how things were going on the board, and, and now kind of getting a fresh start, really hoping that, uh, these, um, can, um, can be addressed, and, and, uh, I think the faith of how the board functions going forward, um, our confidence in, um, the board's ability to satisfy, um, those of us parents that have expressed concerns in the past and felt unheard, um, that, that improves and, and we feel more heard and represented going forward. So, um, the main thing that we would like to see, um, is a review of the, the board member ethics. I've, I've sent emails to the board in the past, um, with my specific concerns of how it, it seems we have a pretty big disagreement on the, um, the interpretation of those ethics. So, hearing, um, uh, an active board, uh, discussion on that, I think, um, and clarifications and, and consensus that, and then giving the, the community a chance to, um, reply to your consensus of what the, um, board, how you interpret the board ethics, to make sure we're aligned on that. I think that's a really key point to, um, improve our odds of, of having better, um, uh, having expectations being, um, aligned going forward. And really looking forward to, um, staying an active participant and being as helpful in any capacity that we can, so, um, I'll, one last comment. I, I brought up another, another email to the board, um, you know, specific, this is a good example when there's a specific issue that's definitely circulating in the community and within the school, just to know what the school, uh, um, administration and board, um, think and have a common stance on. And that's, one specific issue that comes to mind is this topic of racism, and it blends into CRT and stuff, but there are so many aspects to it. Fifteen seconds Cory. And the, the couple of ways I've started to try to start a communication on that, I haven't got a real warm fuzzy feeling of the responses I'm getting, so, uh, just, you know, making sure that we hear all voices in the community, kind of have a consensus on should that be, is what should and shouldn't be.
Cory, your three minutes are up, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Oh, this is Patty.
Hi, you're on speaker, can you hear us?
I can.
All right, um, who is starting his timer?
All right, I'm taking this opportunity as a private citizen to voice my opinion on things that are coming to our school district right now. Ignorance is a lack of knowledge or information. It is not Somerset School District's responsibility to create ignorant students. It is the district's responsibility to engage, educate, and empower all learners, right? The parents, they are the ones who can be held responsible for creating an ignorant citizenry, not the board and not our school district. There's a lot of confusion about what CRT, anti-racism, social justice actually mean. These are things that exist in our society to combat systemic racism. Systemic racism has been proven to exist over and over again from the very beginning in a minority person's life, through pregnancy, throughout life, and into death in the United States. It isn't a political phenomenon, it has actually been documented to exist throughout every system in our country. Those who are ignorant choose not to believe facts, instead they choose to remain ignorant of reality. The Somerset School District has done and is doing a lot of work in order to right some of the issues our district has with equity and inclusion. This is not saying more shouldn't be done. Our numbers that Sarah shared at the last meeting are alarming. That said, I do not think our district is perpetuating these racist homophobic hateful dialogues. We all know that students participating in this behavior are 100% learning it at home. From their ignorant parents, children are learning that equity is not important in our society. They're learning that their own self is far more important than anything that is best for the greater good. They're learning that if the truth makes them uncomfortable, they should just fashion some new stories so they can feel better. The thing is, our racial history is horrible. The things that minorities have experienced and continue to experience in our country, from genocide, slavery, stealing children, internment camps, rape brutality, bombing neighborhoods, these are things that those arguing against CRT get uncomfortable lives. They learn this history and think, well, I didn't do that, or better yet. Why should I hate for someone else to sin? All of these things have been documented in history as factual, not political, but factually vast that have contributed and continue to contribute to the minority experience in America. I know there are a lot of fragile white people in Somerset who are afraid of minority groups. These people are willing, are completely unwilling to examine their own prejudices and biases because doing so will make them thankful crap, maybe I'm a little racist. And that type of self-reflection is hard for those ignorant to the real world experiences.
Thirty seconds Patty.
Those people in bubbles can easily judge others without repercussion. They do not have to worry that they will be called out for their implicit or explicit racism. Well, sorry to say, but that bubble has burst. While a lot of people did stand up for Matt, I can assure you that the majority of Somerset will stand up against our school district, giving in to the racist anti-CRT talking points that are coming to the meetings now. I know Somerset is better than this. Thank you board members who are linked into reality and choose to engage, educate, and empower all learners rather than create ignorant ones.
Thank you.
Congratulations guys, bye.
Uh, March, we, Summer, Ten, Two, Four, Six.
Sure, it looks like a lot, but it's very brief, so don't get too nervous yet. Don't be curious, sleeping bags or anything tonight. First one, district health update. You know, the scoop came out last Friday and it showed us with one, one adult and three cases in the, in the system as of today. You know, our elementary's at 100% back, we, you know, we turned a corner on that. We, you know, we had a couple of classrooms we were tracking over the last couple of weeks, but everyone is back now and, and fine. Middle school, we have two, I believe we have two students, is Sarah, is that correct? Okay, two students and one staff person out, and high school has one student presently today. So, again, knock on wood, we're, we're faring much better than other districts around us, and I think, you know, a lot of that thanks has to go to parents, you know, they're recognizing, you know, when they're, when we tell them, you know, the kids are symptomatic, they're taking them right home and they're doing what they need to do. Staff has been fantastic, and I, I can't say enough about Ryan. Ryan is so on top of us and he's wired into every health group we have, so, I mean, he's in touch and on top of us daily, so, again, we're, we're faring very well on the health update. Construction wise, as you notice around here, you know, we've got sod in. The two things we, uh, have left to finish this last round of construction is there's trophy cases in the high school, uh, and I think they're coming in this next week. And then the flooring, which we knew was going to be sometime in October for that hallway. Then we've got this round all done, and we'll, when we get our numbers set, we'll figure out what we have left. It's not going to be hundreds of thousands, but, you know, as long as we're on the plus side of it, we'll see what we have left and what we can tackle from, from there, and we'll put out a list of potential projects. Strategic plan, you know, last time we met, and I think this was when we were talking, uh, review and what have you, there were some things that just over the summer I have not been able to get to, but, uh, this last couple of weeks I was able to get a lot accomplished, so I've got the, the strategic plan format ready to go out to our core planning team and our building leadership team to evaluate the work we did last year. That will probably go out this week. My goals that I have are complete, we'll put those out for the work session next, uh, next month. And, uh, student achievement, I remember, Bruce, I think you had made a comment at one of the meetings there about knowing where we're at and where we're going. You know, so much of this is still embargoed, but I have, I've done a lot of work on it. We have a format down that soon as this stuff is unembargoed, you know, there's a lot of information to give you. And it'll, again, it'll tell, take you from where we were to, you know, where we're heading and what we should, what we should do with the information. So that's, as soon as it's unembargoed, we'll, we'll deal with that. Uh, that OCR complaint that we had five years ago is coming to an end as far as what we had to do on our end of things. Last Friday, our professional development day, you know, the principals and Abby did a fantastic job of working with the staff. We had an education component that had to be approved by the OCR and by our attorneys, and a survey to actually prove knowledge that had to be approved. So everyone in the district supposedly had taken it on Friday, there's a makeup session, I think, this week sometime, then we are done, we're out of it, it's, it's overdone with it. You know, it's important to note that the district did nothing wrong on this. The OCR lost this complaint, I believe, but they lost the complaint. And that was five years ago, because they contacted us and we dealt with it, and then it was gone for five years. Came back, they said, oops, we found it, you need to do this now, now, now. And, and you know what, we did. Again, principals and Abby did a fantastic job of putting this presentation together and putting it out to the staff and the responses, and so that'll be put to rest now. And from where we were five years ago when that complaint was made to where we are today, we're in a whole different world, the equity work we've done has really taken those issues. I don't want to say they're off the table, but our staff has received training over the years in that, but again, we're dealing with something from five years ago, so, so just, that should, uh, be complete. Bridging Somerset, uh, Kim, uh, Kim Dunley, Dave Brock, and I met last week, and we're, what we're going to do is rather than, you know, we used to do the elected officials, get them to get our, kind of like our meeting we had with, uh, a reopening plan, we're going to have an open general meeting, community meeting, to talk about what direction we want to go, community, school, village, township, what have you, and then shape up some general ideas on what we think is a large group, 50,000 foot, uh, some key points, and then assemble a core planning team from that group to continue on the, the work. So that's going to happen probably in the second week of October here, and it'll be, rather than just a select group of people, we want to open it up to people, and just have a brainstorming session and say, you know what, here, here we identified 10 things that the community wants to work on to, to promote Somerset and show pride in Somerset. You know, we've, we've dealt with enough over the last year, we need this more than ever right now, and so that's the direction we're going to go with, Bridging Somerset.
Mark, really quick, can you tell our new board members what OCR is?
Office of Civil Rights. And there was a claim file, a complaint filed five years ago about reporting and investigating, and that they didn't felt that there was a situation, there was a situation that happened and they didn't think it was investigated correctly or properly. So our training this last week was basically, what if someone comes to you with a complaint? What do you do? How do you handle it? Am I summarizing that?
Yep.
Yeah, and so that's, that's what we have our training in, um, for that, so. I think, you know, you guys were there, you guys did a great job, any comments on that? The, it was, uh, staff was great?
No, I'd say the only component really left is there's a student component as well. Um, and so Sarah and I, in our buildings, um, you know, looking in an age-appropriate way to bring a lesson to our homeroom and advisory classes that will provide staff with resources to be able to kind of walk through a lesson there too, recognizing harassment. What do you do if you see it? What do you do if you're part of it? Who do you go to? So there's a student component to it, so, which will be good.
That's all I have in that segment.
Okay. The next part was the financial report that Dave had attached. Did anybody have any questions or comments about the financial reports? Um, I believe in October we're going to get something more, um, detailed from Dave. Well, Bruce just left, but there was, uh, some things that he was asking about that Dave said would be happening in October. And then the enrollment report.
Yeah, yeah, if you look at the enrollment report, you know, it's got a breakdown of our, you know, our numbers in each grade and our section sizes and that, but one that's in question is the, you know, fifth grade. But just backing up to the enrollment report in general, we're about six students less than we were at this time last year, but we're plus one from the end of last year. The interesting piece is, is that, you know, we graduated 121 seniors and we've taken in, what is it, 93? Kindergarten students, so, uh, you know, our class is going out or larger, but we're still maintaining, so we're not losing, you know, a lot of kids are just not coming in in the, in the beginning, in early. And that's the, you really want to see those kindergarten JK numbers up, because once they come, they usually stay. But if you don't get them right away, you know, there, and there's so many more options for kids out there, and, you know, people are, the last couple of years has not been easy, you know, with homeschooling and what have you. So, again, just something to keep your eye on, the classes that are coming in and the classes that we're graduating. I think we have our largest class this year, 130 students, and then from there it starts, you know, starts heading, you know, down in numbers. Going into that additional fifth grade section, I would recommend we do it. Again, that's a top end of our, our numbers, I think we're going to handle it as a long-term sub, do we say?
Correct.
And, because I think, you know, next, I shouldn't say I think. Next year we'll have to get serious on some re- reallocating of FTEs as far as looking at the class sizes and what have you, because you can see we have some very low class sizes in the elementary, and we're pushing into the high school now with the larger ones, so, again, that's just something to keep in mind. But again, that fifth grade, financially, we're, we're good, we can handle it, and it'll keep us down into that, you know, lower piece, which, you know, we've always prided ourselves on that, so. That's all I have.
Would there be anything you wanted to add, Sarah?
No, if you had any questions about the memo that I wrote, just I worked with the team to talk with them about the benefits that they saw as well, um, you know, it'll be some juggling. We'll have to, you know, look at kids, communicate with parents that we're going to be making the switch. But I think in the long run it'll be beneficial for our short term, kind of like upset with some change and transition, and will help and support the kids through that piece.
Mm-hmm, so, and this has happened before, we have added a kindergarten class.
Yeah.
In October in the past.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay, then the next part of the agenda is the policy update.
Hold on a second. Yeah, I want to make a motion now.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, stepped out. I'll make a motion to approve the additional fifth grade section request, um, as stated in the memo.
Okay, so Bruce has made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, I missed who said that.
I'm sorry, I did.
Kendall, Roxanne.
Yep.
Second by Roxanne, any other questions or concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, Bruce.
Thank you.
The next part is the policy updates. These policies were brought for a first reading at the work session in September, so they're up for approval now. There was a memo sent out before the work session, and I just got it to Lacey and Matt today. So you've got it late, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it?
I did not see it.
Okay, so typically what we do is when we go through some policies, I write up a memo that outlines, uh, what any changes are, and if there's anything that the board needs to discuss, if there's a decision that needs to be made or a choice that needs to be made. And, uh, if there are policies like that, then I attach those with the language. And so for this batch, there was one, uh, policy number 3120. And the NEOLA change had been to, uh, eliminate the employment of relatives of board members. And I've talked with Mark about this, and, um, so we need to have a board discussion of the recommendation is that we continue with the language that's in the other policies about employees in the district. And so the language would read, relatives of board members may be employed by the board provided the board member does not participate in any way in the discussion or vote on any matter related to said employment. Uh, we have done this in the past, we've had, uh, board members who have had family members who were employees in the district, and right now, I'm sure all of our principals can attest to the lack of licensed, highly qualified candidates for positions. It's not, you're not getting as many applications as you have in the past, and we do not want to limit our pool, and so, uh, the recommendation is to adopt this policy as submitted in that email to, uh, the rest of the board members got it on September 11th. And we had the first reading on it. So right now is that the paragraph that's all stricken red? Or where you?
It's, it's in red right now.
Okay, so that would be? So are you looking at the one that's attached to the agenda or the one that I emailed you? Yes, to attach to the agenda. The one that's attached to the agenda is the NEOLA recommendation. Okay. And the one that was emailed to you, that red is highlighted in yellow, so that stricken part would be taken out. And then the blue that's written in is the same language that's in the other policies, so it's consistent. And actually, that's the policy we have right now. I don't know, I, what NEOLA's reasoning was on changing it, to tell you the truth. I, you know, I suppose conflict of interest.
So the policy really didn't change? You just want to against the recommendation?
NEOLA recommended a change.
And we're going to stick with what was?
Yes, that, well, that's our recommendation, the board's going to have to vote on it.
Yes, right.
So do we just approve all other policies on there except for that one?
Nope, you can approve all of them as was submitted to the board, and then I can just get the language to Teja.
Okay.
So 0144 dot five still has that number three hanging at the end of it. 0144 point five.
At the bottom of the page.
Bottom, first page, yeah. Uh, Teja said she was going to fix that when it went into the NEOLA updates. Okay. And we should talk about 5120 as well, was it 5120 or 5130? 5310? 5310, thank you. There are two copies of it in the folder, and the recommendation then would be to take the newer one without the et cetera in it.
That's the recommendation?
Yes.
Which folder?
Uh, if you click on the agenda item, there's a folder up at top that says policy update, and then underneath it, there are two 5310s.
Perfect, thank you.
And we'd be going with the second one? No, sorry, the first one.
Oh, I think it's the 923 date, right? No, it's the, it's the second one, where it was stricken out, the 923.
With the et cetera stricken out.
Right.
Yeah.
Updated one.
Yeah. In my folder, it was the first one, but... All right, so... I will make a motion that we approve the policies listed in 5A1 with the updated language for 3120 as was sent to the board, and the updated language for 5310 that was sent to the board with the et cetera stricken from the examples. So that's my motion. Would anybody like to second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you Bruce. Are there any other questions or comments about the policies?
I just have a quick question or a comment, just because with us, um, getting this, I, I peeked at it and I looked at it, but I just would feel a little bit more comfortable as far as voting for something to just have a little more time to make sure that I completely understand and ask the questions that are, that are needed.
Yep.
I don't want to, I mean, cause it to go on longer than it has to, I would just like to make sure that I read through it thoroughly.
Right, and for this one, because you weren't here for the first reading, if you would like to abstain, you certainly may.
Okay.
And then can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Sorry, so in 3120, with when it states about the employment.
Yes.
Can you just further add to that when it says the relatives of the board members may be employed by the board? Is that specifically to employees within the, like, professional staff as far as teachers? Does that mean, or professional staff, does that mean school board, administration, like how, what does that encompass?
Right, so there are policies, um, for each level of employment, so the 30, the 3,000s are the... So the 30, the 3000s are the category of professional staff, licensed staff, teachers, guidance counselors, et cetera. And then the 4000s are support staff. And there's also a group of 1000s that are the administrators. And many of the policies that we have, they have the exact same policy in every category. So this particular policy in the 3000s is for professional staff, the licensed staff.
Okay.
Did I answer it?
But it doesn't include the 1000 staff?
No, that would be a different policy.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, done. Board professional?
Do you want to ask if there's any abstentions on that? I don't, I just, I know, or would Lacy just say?
Would anybody like to abstain?
Okay, I just thought it was an option, so I just.
Yeah.
I didn't say UNA, so I would abstain.
Right.
And if you do have questions, Lacy, on them, you can ask to bring them back and place them back on.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I wasn't trying to go winnow the other way, I just wanted to make sure that.
But yeah, if you want to look into it further, then yeah, you can bring them, we can bring them back.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is some board professional development. And I've been in contact with Cheryl Gullikson, I think her last name is, with Wosby. And she is prepared to meet with the board. And she sent out some dates. So if you wouldn't mind getting out your calendars and looking. I'm guessing that the date that's going to work for the most of us is Monday, October 18. It's a Monday, but it's a Monday that we do not have a school board meeting. We have our work session on the 11th. And the regular session on, what would that be, the 25th? The other days that she had available were Wednesdays and Thursdays, which I know is a conflict for some. And there was one Tuesday, which was the 19th.
I can make it on the 18th.
On Monday, the 18th, you're good?
Yeah. See it rolling.
All right.
I can't make the 18th.
I did.
How about the 19th?
What time is it at?
Uh, we have, we have it, so we can.
Is it all day or?
Oh, heavens no. Is he like a school board meeting, an hour, hour and a half, maybe?
So like in the evening or?
Yeah, that's what I, I think that's what's best for most people who are working during the day.
I'm thinking I have to work the 18th and 19th, but I don't have a calendar here.
Okay.
But I can't remember.
All right, well, maybe you would rather email me. I can send out all the dates that Cheryl sent me.
Okay.
And you guys can respond if you'd rather. Okay. And I was hoping that we could do this soon. But if we have to wait until November so everybody can be here, I think it's really important that we're all here to participate.
And this, this one will be just with the board, correct?
And Mark.
Okay.
Oh, really?
And it's all day.
No, that's fine, but you know, when you talk to this person, did she want me included in?
She said we could go either way.
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine. I have no problem being there. It's just sometimes, you know, they'd like to work differently and just with the board or what have you, so.
She said she could go either way.
Okay, I'll make any day work, so. You're welcome, Mark. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, then, policy committee discussion is the next item. So we just went through some policies. And in the past, there were two board members who spent more time reading all the policies and checking on state statutes and coordinating with the other policies because many of our policies refer to other policies. And it is quite a commitment of time. But as Bruce can attest, without this policy committee.
We don't get through it.
The board is in a really tough situation. I mean, the, the policy committee took on a heavy burden and made it easier for the rest of the board. So we need some people to, who are interested in policy and who are good with the language skills. And there's a lot of legalese who would be interested in helping on this committee. I certainly intend to continue. But I need at least one other person to help me. And we could, we can have up to two other, more people. So if you're not, if you want some time to think about this and you might want to contact me and ask me some more questions. If you would like me to send this question out in an email also, so you can respond to me individually by email, that's all right with me. What would you prefer?
I think some time to think about it. Send, send an email. And then maybe some discussion with those that have been on the committee, who was on the committee in the past.
Katie and Patty Joel.
Okay. Okay, so I let that conversation with you. Want to tell, is it some that, is it ongoing all year?
Yep.
Constantly looking at policies?
Okay. Well, so it's, from what I understand, where you met, once a month?
Yes.
So before the work session, you meet to go through the, so what do we, how many policies do you have this year, 100?
So Neola is the company that we use to work with our policies. And they make two drops a year typically, one in January and one in July. We're working on the July drop. I don't think we got it until August.
Yeah.
This year. But in that drop, there are 56 policies. So this is the next batch.
Coffee stain. So the committee will review it, then they come to these.
And the recommendations.
So we, we come, we've seen, we bring, there's 10, 10, 11 that we pick apart at a meeting or 15, whatever, we can divvy it up. And so it's gone through and reviewed at that, before the work session then. She sends out, or the committee sends out before the work session so that the rest of us can just see basically the highlighted ones that we need to address as a board. I mean, you can look at all the policies, we can look at all of them. But I mean, usually just helps pick, these are probably the talking points. And some that we're going with the Neola recommendation, that's just. So they kind of meet for their three hours, because otherwise, we literally, we get through two sometimes.
And you're here till 10 o'clock.
And we, yeah, we wouldn't touch, and you're just, and they're stacked up. We'd have 20 on the agenda, I mean, there was.
It was crazy.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't want to be a part of it. I'm just saying, I just know it's, it has worked and helped. So I'm thankful that they did commit to it, so. But I guess it is probably two to three hours to get through all of them. Because, you know, you are researching, probably just take away, because they usually try to get it to us, you know, that Thursday or Friday or something before the meeting, so we can look at it. So we're ready for Monday, can bring your questions.
And I do try to group them. So all of the policies that we're going to look at for our October work session are on the same topic. As I was explaining to Lacy, that 3120, that had to do with professional development. There's a 4120 and an 1120, and so I try to get them all together. And that makes it easier as well, that you're looking at the same language for all of those policies that relate at the same time.
I'm interested, but let's just have a conversation, then I'll give you final statement.
Sure.
I'm here, okay.
And I think it might be helpful for Lacy and Matt to know that the requirement about policies, we're required to look at them every, I don't know the exact.
Some of them have to be looked at every year.
Yeah, and then some have to be reviewed. But some of them haven't been reviewed in a long time, and that's what we're.
They're usually changed when the legislature changes items, and that's what Neola does. They, they put all the things that are in legislation, make the updates. So there's a degree of services we can get from them. I mean, we could have them do everything, but it's going to cost us.
Well, the other thing is, there are some choices that the board needs to make.
Right.
And there are times when the policy committee would meet and there were choices that we wanted the entire board to weigh in on. And so that's what we would say in our notes for the policies, that in this policy, there's a choice that needs to be made. We want the whole board to weigh in on it. And we probably would give a little brief synopsis of what the choice was about.
This process works very well for us to personalize policies to our district.
Sounds like it.
Catherine, one more, can I begin?
Yeah.
And this is just sitting in the back of my head here, and it just doesn't sit right. Since we set board compensation, and I know the work you guys put in here. I, my two cents, I think this committee should be compensated like an additional meeting.
Does that end up really?
No, you voted against it, Bruce.
Yeah, but wasn't it like six to one or something?
No, no, it wasn't.
That should be something that we revisit then with the new board.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be unanimous in that meeting, does it?
No, but it had to be a majority, and I abstained because I was on it. And you voted no, and Cherie and Roxanne voted no. And our two, we only had two members of the public, and they didn't want to say, so they abstained.
Just think about it, I just think, you know, the time they put in, it's worth one more meeting.
So Cherie, are you suggesting that we revisit that at our October work session?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would be willing to, too. That was just, there was no, that was brought up, and there was no, I mean, and I know I could have asked questions, but it was brought up and I wasn't prepared for that question. And then now we're talking more about the, and what it all entails, and I'm willing to look at it again, too.
Okay.
I guess. I have no idea, you spent three hours on it prior to each meeting and more.
I guess I was thinking like, because we have, we have more committees, like the construction committee.
Yep.
Like, I don't think people have any big, so like, I guess to look at it as a specific committee is different than, you know, like every committee, and that's how I guess I looked at it at that time. Because like, you know, I don't need to compensate for a construction committee.
Well, you should have, I think you put in a lot of time, too.
Kaja just brought up something interesting here, and I have to check on this because that may have to be only voted on at the annual meeting.
I don't know that the board can make that decision, it may need to be made by the electors.
Exactly. That's why it's only at the annual meeting, so you might have to go a whole.
Let me check out, let me check out now.
I think I was the only one who voted yes.
You were, yeah. You were.
So I said, that's why it was, I guess maybe more specific on the committee that, that committee is different than other committees, I guess.
Yeah, and the person who made the motion did specifically mention the policy committee. But yeah, I don't recall what the specific wording of the motion was.
All right, so Kaja, you're going to check on that for us, but I do believe you are correct, and it has to be at the annual meeting.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would anybody care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve 6A, 1, 2, 3, 4. B, 1, C, 1, 2, D, 1. And E, 1.
All right, so Bruce has made a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda. Would anyone care to second?
I second that.
Was that Lacy?
Yes.
Thank you, Lacy. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. General information, October meeting dates are the 11th and 25th. This next portion of the meeting is where we go once around the table. The purpose is to bring up items that members may wish to have on a future agenda due to open meeting laws. It is not the time to bring up a discussion item. Because if it's not printed on the agenda, we can't discuss it actively. All right? But if you have a topic that you would like at a future session, now is your opportunity. So Roxanne, I wonder if I should start with you?
I just want to revisit the, the teacher that was here that talked about the Prairie project. Just, I just want to keep that, I just want to keep that alive and talking about that. And I'm hopeful that that will come to fruition, so I just wanted to mention that. It doesn't have to be at the next meeting, I just want to keep that discussion going.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I had asked Mark, you were going to check with someone.
Yeah, I've got some area out there that I think will be very conducive as a start.
So do you have enough information that we could include this on the October work session?
Yeah, I want to talk with the teacher first, to see what, what they have, he has in mind. Because I, what I have in mind, you know, we'd be whittling in on the farmer, but look what we did this last year, you know, so. We'll, I'll talk to him and see if this will be adequate.
Okay, thank you. Because he did say something about needing to get going this winter with the planting and the ordering seeds and all that. Thank you for bringing that up. Was there anything else?
No, that's it, thank you. Oh, and welcome to Matt and Lacy.
Welcome, Matt and Lacy. Looking forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Just a comment, I listened to the live stream on my way home from work last week on volleyball. Much improved, you guys did awesome. So just, I'm again happy that we did that, and just, if you're watching or listening, just tune into those, that crew. I mean, it was Jessica, Matt, or Jessica.
Cody.
Cody and Will. Will, so. Yeah, it was fun to listen to, instead of listening to talk, we go all the way home, those guys are a lot better. So it was, it was a good deal, they were, they were pretty good, and I'm glad we approved that, and all those, that crew to, you know, on that spot. I would never have a clue what's going on in volleyball games, so.
So you need that extra something?
Hey, it was worth it, it was good. It was fun, so, just a positive, glad they're doing it.
Good.
Thank you, Matt and Lacy, for joining the board. And last meeting, we thanked Patty Joel for her service. And I would, Katie wasn't here, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Katie for her five and a half years of service to the board and the tremendous amount of work that she put in working on the policy committee and other committees. She was instrumental in getting the employee council going and also the wage study by McGrath. So she worked really hard and she contributed a lot to the school district. Matt?
I have nothing. Looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Mark?
Same as you said. I didn't thank Katie last time either, but Patty Joel did.
And Lacy?
Same as Matt, I'm excited to be here and I look forward to working together.
Thank you. So then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I am taking a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Cherie, is there a second?
I second.
All right, second by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned at 6:49, thank you. I think that was one of.